That is the first item. The second item is to consider recommending the county board enter into contract C-0006932, a renewal with RS Eden RSI Laboratories for drug testing services at rates that range from $3.93, a $5.90 per-drug screen, $8.50 for ETG alcohol testing, and $35 for GC-MS confirmation testing from January 1st, 2019 through December 31st, 2021. I will move items seven and eight.
Fair.
Further discussion. Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severajah.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Motion carries. And my final item is Resolution 2018 HS20 Economic Assistance Bills. Then I'll offer that resolution. There are further discussion. Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severajah.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Motion carries. That concludes my report. Now we'll move on to Information Technology Committee report. Commissioner Gamash.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The IT committee met on Monday, November 19th, and we have two action items. The committee recommends the county board approve the award of master contract number C-0006748 for professional services in conjunction with hardware or software purchase for the county of Anoka with Insight Public Sector of Tempe, Arizona. There is some of the background here, Madam Chair and county board. The state of Minnesota has a contract with Insight Public Sector that provides terms for professional services, and we need, we have a need for a master contract. And that's why we're looking at Insight Public Sector because they already have this with the state. This will allow us to more easily obtain professional services independent of a software or hardware purchase. I don't know if you wanted to add anything more to that, Susan?
I certainly could. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the county board. I'm Susan Vreeland, the Director of Information Technology. IT, much like many other departments, when we lean on a vendor a couple of times a year, we're looking towards going the master contract route simply because, you know, our partners in the attorney's office and purchasing their busy staff. This gives us a vehicle to not kind of reinvent the wheel every time we're working with the same vendor. Again, they're not used all of that often. We bring them in typically when it's a new technology we need some assistance with, but this should make that process much more streamlined.
Thank you, Susan. And this also gives us a three-year term. It's for a three-year term with the county having an option to renew the contract for two additional one-year terms for a possible total of five years. It gives us some consistency.
Correct. And Madam Chair Commissioners, I should add, they are on the state contract, so we do get pricing and rates under that decreased state pricing contract regardless of using this vehicle.
And I will move it.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion. Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severajah.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The second item is the committee approved the memo understanding number C-0006855 with sharing the county's passport scheduling application with the city of White Bear Lake. Once again, we're sharing with some of our surrounding communities, some of the IT programming that we've done. Somebody liked it there and they thought they could use it, and we're more than happy to share, always looking for a little coming back our way at some point in time, but it's always nice to do that because it gives us a couple of nice things going on is that they may find that we have something that they like, they may add something to it that we might like and bring it back to us. So there's always some options there, but this is a good example of some of the work that our IT people are doing and how it's being noticed around the area. Do you have anything to add on that one, Susan?
No, Madam Chair. I guess I could add, Madam Chair. Members of the county board, we continue to look for opportunities where we get something back in return from our fellow counties. All of our agreements with counties that get this type of an arrangement for an application commit to giving any improvements to us at, of course, no cost to the county. Although we haven't received, you know, a packaged application from a county, what we do have gotten over the last probably five or six years is a lot of information sharing. I chair the Metro County IT Collaborative Group. We meet December 14th at Dakota County. Those types of relationships are built on this type of sharing, and we bring back a wealth of information that we in turn are not spending money on to implement some really great technologies. So although some of the benefits aren't out on the forefront, the county does receive them.
Thank you, Susan. I'll move the approval.
I'll second it. Further discussion. Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Severajah.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The other two items are informational only. We are always talking about security issues at IT. How we brought up, and you guys have seen some of the changes the IT people have been doing. We also talked a little bit about the impact of some of the tariffs on technology purchases that we're working with some of our vendors on, and they've been informing us as things are going along. We're hoping that by the time our purchases come, we won't see too much of a jump, if any, at all. So, Madam Chair, that's my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Gamash. Now we'll move on to Public Safety Committee report. Commissioner Brassad.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The committee met on November 20th, and we have five action items. The first, under emergency management, is the committee recommends approval and execution of contract C-0006862, which is the 2018 Emergency Management Performance Grant between the state of Minnesota Department of Public Safety and the Anoka County Emergency Management in the amount of $126,513 and a term of January 1st, 2018 through December 31st of 2018.
Is there a motion to approve?
To move.
There a second?
Second.
Further discussion. Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severajah.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item.
The committee recommends acceptance and execution of grant C-0006727, the 2018 Urban Areas Security Initiative Grant in the amount of $200,000 for the development, maintenance, and improvement of local emergency management programs with a term of January 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2020.
Is there a motion to approve?
To move.
There a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Brassad for their discussion.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
This continuation of the existing grant or is this new? I'm presuming we have had this opportunity before.
We have.
Yeah.
This is a new renewal. It's the monies are used to prevent, protect, and mitigate against acts of terrorism.
Very good.
And roll call vote.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severajah.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item.
The committee recommends the county board adopt Resolution 2018 PS14, accepting dedicated donation from Friends of SWAT Minnesota.
Is there an offer of the resolution?
I'll offer it.
Resolution's been offered. Further discussion.
And just to clarify, this is $21,499.99 for the purchase of 24 communication headsets, which will be used by the SWAT team.
Further discussion. Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severajah.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item.
The committee recommends the county adopt Resolution 2018 PS15, accepting dedicated donation from the Cosse Family Foundation of the St. Paul Foundation.
Is there an offer of the resolution?
I'll offer it.
Resolution's been offered. Further discussion. Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severajah.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Motion carries. And...
Madam Chair, if I can very quickly, I just want to acknowledge the generosity of Virginia Cosse. Virginia is related to a relative in my office, and she feels very supportive of Anoka County law enforcement, and she reached out to me actually to help start this process. And it's gone on for a couple of years, so I want to publicly thank her for the, for her donation and the support of Anoka County law enforcement.
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
They've, they're donating $15,000 to the sheriff's office for its canine program and $10,000 to the sheriff's office for rifle equipment, so it is being well spent.
Very generous. Very generous donation. I appreciate the generosity of both the Cosse family as well as the Friends of the SWAT Minnesota. Always very appreciative of the generosity of folks who are supportive of our law enforcement. All right, now we will move on to the final item.
The committee recommends approval and execution of a memorandum of understanding and agreement for federal equitable sharing for the Anoka Hennepin Narcotics and Violent Crimes Task Force, contract C-0006917.
Is there a motion to approve?
To move.
I'll second.
Further discussion. Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severajah.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Now we will move on to the public hearing to obtain comment on the proposed changes to the capital improvements program for the five-year period, 2019 through 2023. I will turn it over to County Attorney Palumbo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, I then would convene the public hearing to obtain comment on the capital improvement program changes for that five-year period. Would like to note for the record that notice of this public hearing was published on November 9th, 2018, and would ask a clerk to make that part of the record. And at this time, Budget Director Patty Hetrick, I believe, will address the board on these proposed changes. Ms. Hetrick.
Thank you, Mr. Palumbo. I'm Patty Hetrick, Budget Director for Anoka County. Today, we're going to review our 2019 CIP plan. The goals of this plan are, the goals of this presentation are to look at the 2019 CIP overview, look at the areas that we're spending most of the capital improvement money on, and our next steps. Our goals this year, both for the budget and the capital improvement program, were to maintain current level of county services, address increased public safety needs, preserve and improve the assets of Anoka County, and economic development. Our plan program this year is a total of almost $40 million. During this plan, we will spend about $23.6 million on roads and bridge, $4.2 million on parks and recreation. We'll buy some radios for the sheriff for $239,000. The library is a centennial remodel project, and that's $6.1 million. Information management will spend $2.8, and building and equipment will spend $2.5 million. We need to talk about how we are going to fund these projects, and I have broken it down in a pie chart for you. County sources that will go into detail on the next slide are $15.2 million. County bonding, that is half of the remodel project for Centennial Library is $3.1. We are receiving federal money, $2.4 million, state money of $17.9 million, and city shared costs of $812,000. I think it's important to recognize that our county board has been very proactive in setting aside funds every year to pay for a lot of these maintenance efforts and improvements. There is no new levy on any of these projects. We are going to spend 6.3 of county transportation tax on our highway and bridge program. We have preserved money in asset preservation to pay for half of the library remodel project. Our building fund of $2.1 will pay for all the improvements to infrastructure, parking lots, et cetera, and our IT fund will pay $2.8 million for mostly cybersecurity and other projects. We have summarized these projects by area. This PowerPoint presentation... This PowerPoint presentation will be on our county website if anyone wants to look in more detail. As you can see, the majority of our road and bridge money goes towards annual road and bridge preservation programs and all other types of road projects. This is our building fund projects. One of our biggest projects is the Rum River Boiler and Heating Upgrade. And then you'll see miscellaneous projects include parking lots, security, jail expansion, LED lighting retrofit, et cetera. In the parks and recreation area, our biggest project is the Chain of Lakes Worgo Nature Center Improvement for $1 million. We are also improving several other facilities. In information management, as I spoke to, our number one priority is cybersecurity, but we also have other infrastructure needs that need to be maintained and upgraded. Our only project in the library CIP plan this year is the Centennial Library remodel. Again, that was funded by half bond and half asset preservation. Our other small project is the radios for the sheriff. This is a replacement plan that we keep up to date on that technology for the safety of our staff. It's $239,000. If you want more information, you can go to www.anokacounty.us/budget, and you will find both this presentation and other information regarding this program. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Hetrick. Does the board have any questions for Patty Hetrick? Seeing no questions from the board, I'll then open it up for any public comment. I will ask if any members of the public wish to come forward and address the board. I'll ask a second time any members which come forward, and a third time any members of the public which come forward and offer a comment on this proposed plan. Seeing none at this time, I will then close the hearing. Madam Chair, and turn the matter back to you.
Thank you very much. Now we'll take up the adopting the capital improvements plan. Is there a motion to approve the capital improvement plan for 2019 to 2023, including the capital improvement budget for 2019?
To move.
There's a second? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severaja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you to Patty and really the whole budget team and the department heads for working through a long process. There's a lot that goes into all of this, and I know that Patty comes up and presents it all and makes it look just very easy, but there's a lot of work that has gone in on the part of everyone to bring us to this point. So thank you very much to everyone who's been involved in that process. Now we will move on to committee appointments. We have a number of them. The first is to consider reappointing Steve Wegeman to the, it should say Rice Creek Watershed District for a three-year term ending January 27th, 2022. And the next is to consider reappointing Corey Duffy to the Personnel Board of Appeals for a new term, which will end December 31st, 2021. And then reappointing Don Jonas, who's presently serving a term as an alternate on the Personnel Board of Appeals, and that term is expiring December 31st, 2018. So he's being reappointed to fill a vacant board position, not the alternate position. And that has a term ending December 31st, 2020. So that's just for clarification purposes. And then the final item is for informational purposes, my appointment of Mike Lang, the Department of Employment and Economic Development, to the Anoka County Workforce Development Board for a term expiring June 30th, 2020. So I will move items 10A and B. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Close oppose. Motion carries. And is there anything else to come before the county board? If not, meeting is adjourned.